Hi everyone and welcome to the stream. So, yep. Uh, no one's here.
Hello?
Uh, I need to check if there been like... Shadow banned or some stuff. The problem is that it's... I mean, I keep bitching about it because I know it's true. But it still annoys me that I don't know... That we don't know your viewer count properly. Because, uh... Uh, making our life more difficult for no reason. And again, today, I need to check something actually. Uh, before we do anything because I want to see if my, uh... If my vote stuff has fucked and that's why... I was, uh, actually copyright claim or not. So I need to see... No, because I checked actually! No, because I checked. At least I checked, uh, the vote. Because I checked the vote to see, because if my sound stuff was not properly done, then maybe that was why.
One target and hold one piece of cover. There we go.
No, because, no, yeah.
Your horns deal bludgeon damage and have the cavalry trait. Good.
Dude, your game is so fucking loud.
Oh, sorry.
It was literally louder than you speaking. It's like... Um... So, what are you working on? I go?
Um, hmm. Whatever you think we should work on at this point.
Yeah, I don't know. Uh... I knew about checking thekins. Last time and about other stuff.
Oh yeah, I think we got through all the stuff up to what we've worked on most recently.
Uh, did I finish the humans? It said it's done. I think I, yeah. Okay. Uh, it says... Okay. With humans, like, I can do good. They're good. So, humans also do mind damage?
Huh.
Yeah, I thought it's good. I like it. I thought it was up here. Yeah, no, I think we are done with... We're done with all of thekins again. Uh, I mean, you wanted to work on the new continent.
Yeah!
I guess I have a lot to work on, because there's always more to work on.
Nah... Oh yeah, I'm worldly knowledge. I don't feel like working on worldly knowledge.
Okay.
Yeah, I looked at that and I'm like, I don't... I don't, I don't wanna.
What's up, Ken? Um... Oh yeah, because I also saw...
Hey, do you have access to that document?
What?
I'm wondering if you have access to the document.
I don't know. I don't really know where it is.
Yeah, let me just send it to you instead then.
Hmm, you just give me access. Because they also have the other nations on the continent of Bergisamon.
Hmm, that's true.
As far as I know, there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 other nations on the continent.
Oh yeah, we probably look into that.
I mean, I did some work on it. One is the Bug Empire.
The...
Uh, one is, um, Greek-inspired.
Hmm.
One is the demon, demon romance.
Hmm.
Uh, one is the... Uh, Slavic slash... Euralic, um... Sea raiders, like, no, not river raiders. River raiders and stuff like that.
Hmm.
Uh, one, the Tusk-born... They don't really exist anymore. They don't really exist anymore because there's no... I guess they could be hornborn. Yeah, they could be hornborn instead. Yeah, makes sense.
Hmm.
There's the hornborn tribes. There's the shadewood clans, which are... Yeah, but goblins don't exist anymore, right? Because...
Yeah, no, Hopkin became, uh...
Hornborn.
Yeah.
Hmm. There's a shadewood clan, there's a world now which is rats, rats. We are the rats, Michael, it's about to there.
Cake pizza are on their way.
And that's, I think 7 is a good amount of nations on the continent.
Hmm.
And again, those are smaller continents. I mean, they're not as big as the one the plan on, like, Croatia. Better retyping.
I, yeah, I need a new keyboard.
That one is very mechanical.
I'll look at it right now, actually.
Very much mechanical. Much mechanic. Yeah, I need to...
Where is the nearest Best Buy to me? Actually, no, there's a computer shop... There's a computer shop that's over in that, over, one town over that I could go to. Uh, we need to think of a new name for this, by the way, because there's no, we don't have a name for it.
For what?
You know, anyone with the link? Viewer. Copy link. Like, we need to think of an actual name for this place.
Which place?
That place.
Yeah, but... Oh, the Asian one?
Yeah.
Uh... No, I had a name for it. Wait. I'll try to look at my own shit. Eh, no. His idea was for the Miss American one. I just get to do the social medias. Uh, again, uh, hello everyone on Twitter. Hello everyone on YouTube. Just, just a bit of a chill, a chill tame... A chill time, a chill stream.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, because we, this week has been hard on players. And on us, actually. Uh, so, there's no session today sadly. Because players could not drop. And those who could were not in the best.
They're in rather shit, uh, status.
It was, it was a shit week. A rose tattoo. So, we're making do. We are making do, people. And that means that we... Are going to work on the... Uh, right now we're working on the, dude, I had a name for it. It annoys me. I knew I had a name for it. Where the fuck, they probably lost them DMs because we DM'd them. That pisses me off, dude. Ah, I know it was a good name as well. I mean, you can call it like DU, even if it's like a bit... A bit obvious. Yinjiang, the works. Nine Springs, Nine, Happy Springs.
So, I have received a message from Jacko asking if you listen to Indila.
What?
I-N-D-I-L-A. Renote who that is.
Uh, no.
Alright.
Go clean because I have a bunch of, um... I mean, I'm not against, I mean, again, you can just send it my way.
He literally just said the name.
Yeah, but you can just send, yeah, but dude...
Alright, there you go. That's the name.
Let me do it up. I think I've seen it somewhere. I think I know that. Oh, I know that. Oh, fuck no, not that. No. No, I don't listen to that.
What kind of music is that?
It's pop nonsense.
Oh, yeah, no.
It's, it's like, if you're not, if you don't know French... It's just, it's, there is, it's, there is a word that both Canadian French and French use. Uh, it's called nier, it's like nier or nierzo. It is very like, uh... Do you know about the movies like Amélie Poulain?
Hmm.
It's like that shit but has music.
Yeah.
I am not, no, not my, not my stuff. And again, if you listen to it, you can, I don't care. It's just not, not my jam, right? Okay.
Shnirt. I think I actually had the, I had some of them started.
Okay, so the names, there's a bunch of names. Uh... So, hmm... It could be like Ku Jing, the dire straits or the place of grievance.
But I meant like, like an actual name name.
That's a name.
What is it?
Uh, Ku Jing. Or Ku Xing.
How you spell that?
Look at the stream.
I'll have to open up the stream.
Uh, could like Mingfei is also one, which is a dark mansion. Uh, Yu Yan, it's Yu Yang, Yu Yuan. I think, I don't know, I don't speak Chinese, sorry. It's Mandarin, I think. It's Yu Yo, Yu Yo. I don't, I don't...
The problem is if we're including, if we're including Japanese lore, if it's a Chinese name, that's not really fair, unfortunately.
It's Asia. It's a lot of different languages. And the last one, actually, all of them, all of them together was the First Emperor. We can't be fucking picky. Then if we do that, then because there's China in there, if we choose a Japanese name, then the Chinese are going to be like, oh, but it is not in Chinese. And if we take people from like Indonesia and shit like that, and Indonesians are gonna be like, what, what is the, why is it not one of our dialects? And you're from Korea, you're like, wait, there's some stuff about Korea, why is it... So, you have to like fit one and the only one that fits with the lore that we have in mind is a Chinese name.
Alright.
It could be Ku Xing, it could be...
Please copy and paste that to me. Please? Perfect.
It means, um, the place of grievance. Or we could go like Nine Springs, or we could go to Serene Darkness, or Serenland. Or we could also get... Yeah, Serene Darkness also works, like Serenity. Yoming. I think.
Yoming?
I think. Yu Ming. Apparently, Yu Ming is the way to say it. I don't know what the one is. I don't know what the two is. I'm trying. It's sort of like Mingxia, which is like a dark realm or underworld. So it depends, we have to choose.
I'm gonna say Yin, uh, what is it? Yinjiang, up at the top. Referring to... Yep. Right up there, uh, Yingxian, Yingxian is how it's saying it's pronounced.
Where? Land of Shade?
Yeah.
Yingxian? Yingxian. Yeah, I could do that, Land of Shade, yeah. Yinxian? Okay.
Here we go. Just tell me what you think of, uh, what's there so far?
I mean, I have a bunch of ideas. At the south, there's the, the people inspired by the Austro-Indians. So they like, kind of like... See people, like, like Maori and stuff like that, but... But... It comes from like a bunch... A bunch of my research. And, and... Han Man. Because it's based on that thing, which is a southern barbarian. Chinese, that's what the Chinese call them, by the way. On a sun that's like a...
Hmm.
Shuasha. Yeah. I mean, it's a bit, even central states. And, yeah, because... The beauty is a handful, I think it is. I think... Yeah, I think it's Han, Sima, Sima Qian. Yeah. Uh, so... Uh, so nine months, there's like the bamboo kingdoms. There's the... Yeah, because there's a bunch of different people like that, uh, because it's, um. There's, yeah. Uh, it's Anshan, okay. What's the word? It was another group of people, but also I'd. I should have taken some, some better notes. As, um, Hanma, the Hong, the Mong people. I know the Mongue because Mongue actually, uh. Yeah. Okay. There is, it's a name, man, uh, graphic pejorative. Okay. Written with radical sad, worm, insect or vermin, oh my god.
Yeah, oh.
Uh, this will defend man as southern man, our snake race. Okay. And racism is only something that white people do, right?
Oh boy.
I mean, they did call them barbarians, like anything outside of China is barbarian, which again is very thematic of humanity in general, because Rome did the same thing. And the Greeks did the same thing. So you know. Uh. Oh shit. Hi. Was that so, Nanman, I knew that's the. The ancestors, like claimed ancestors, because I don't think there's any in Vietnam. Also like originally from China but got kicked out. Uh, origin. The Nanyuer, that's the one. Because I know that I was, um. Na na, na na, oh, the first MBC, oh nice. Looking like a thing from southern China, yes. Birth of Nanyu, Nanyuer, yeah. Han Empire in Nanyuer, Guangdong, yeah. Because, because I know that they have something very interesting with swords. They had like, because, because they had like secret swords and shit like that, and they were actually some of the best blacksmiths at the time. So it was very interesting to me because it's one of the few that have like, like. But you have like association between like. An item. Hmm, sorry, again, I'm, again, I'm sorry, because I'm quite sleepy still. Because Nanyuer, yeah. When I look at the map, it's literally like. Yeah. Um. Yeah. Na na sa pa, na na sa pa. A hufu. Once a good in the fun in the tomb of King of Nanyuer. That's nice. That's very nice, wow. Okay, second set would be CE, that's interesting. Uh, talies were separated into two pieces, one held by the emperor and the one given to my to grandmother, okay. Did they decide? Um, because I know that there's. Wait. Okay, because, okay. Okay. Okay, I'm the new Zerit, I thought, uh, Zhao, or Chinese general, the king, dynasty, okay. Because I know there was an entire thing about swords. Na na sa pa. Hmm. Ooh, that's good, ooh, Deca.
Yes.
Look at the stream if you can. That's very good looking, I like that shit. A jade drinking vessel. Oh. Because it's, doesn't look Chinese, like. It's a. Can I zoom on that shit? Yes. That's very interesting. That's such a like, sep, I mean, I know it's a separate style because it's a separate culture, right? But it's, it's always interesting to see it like in art. With phoenix, it's like.
Oh. That's nice.
Because, again, okay, this is Zhao Mao was the king of Nanyuer. Okay. Really? Hmm. It's very unique. Huh. Whoa, my god, I like that, Deca, I like that shit.
Well, that's very cool.
That's a bronze queen, okay. Oh. That's a deca, okay. Is that a sleuth, alright? But the thing is, hmm. Oh wow. Okay. Um. Because I know there was something about a sword being sacred to them. That I found very interesting. That's a. Hmm. That's a Lu Wei. Yeah, Guangdong. What does he do, eh? That's the one I found. Okay, because that's, because, um, like.
Yeah.
There are tattoos all over the bodies that were sacred. Which is very.
Oh.
Which you can see in some cultures, like, uh, headhunters in Vietnam, so in the north of India, you used to have like, uh, have tattoos. So that's one of the people that I want to like represent. The Bayouais, that's the one I was looking at, okay, nice. Because. Okay, they were known for their short hair, body tattoos, fine swords, and naval, naval prowess, naval, naval, whatever. And the, apparently, according to them, Zelitri was the one who forged the sword. Of the. Yeah. So there are Austro-Norwegians, and Austro-Norwegians are technically the ancestors of the Polynesians. Uh, uh, Polynesians, um. Um, native, native Australians, native Australians, Polynesians, uh, people of Papua New Guinea. Those area like, those area were actually descendants from Austro-Norwegians. Um. And it's also like Taiwan, Southeast Asia, Micronasia, New Guinea, Maliania, Polynesia, they, they pretty much come from that region. Like the Tonga and stuff like that. And again, it's, they're not explored often, which I found kinda. Kinda sad, because it's kind of, because, you know, again, a lot of people focus on, when it comes to China, when it comes to Japan, or Korea, they're focused on the one that is most unknown, like the Gokuryo. Like the Goryo, the Gokuryo, in, in Korea, sorry for my accent, I don't speak Korean. Um, or like the, of course, the classic, like the Sengoku Jidai in Japan, and they also focus on like the roaming states in China, or the classic Chinese dynasty with the, the courts, the palace, the palace, the secret city, stuff like that. They don't focus on what is, what happened before most. And that's what I like, because I want to explore more like the shaman, like the Rice Kingdom in Japan, the period, quote unquote, the Rice Kingdom in Japan, I want to focus, uh, to focus on all the stuff. Like the First Emperor, okay, it was like the roaming state as well, but it's a different spin. So it's our way to, to pretty much get our cake and eat it. But because we also have like the imperial, like we have the, the imperial dynasty of China, you know, all of the glamour, you could say, of, of that period, but you also can explore different ethnic groups, histories, of course, it's, it's fantasy, but we still want to like keep that, you know. Because I, like, Indonesia has like such, like, um, Indonesia and other groups that come, such vibrant cultures, like, um, what's the name? Ah, fuck. Do you live in Sumatra? Sumatra and South of India. The, the Tamil, the Tamil as well have very interesting cultures, with Jainism and stuff like that. Uh, Jainism and also their own version of, um, of Hinduism, it's very interesting, it's, and also, they're not explored as much, which I think is kind of sad, because there are vibrant cultures on their own, right? And also it, it allows us to explore different subjects, more like tribal cultures, uh, headhunting, and also like to. You know. And that's pretty much what, where they lived. Like the U S, like Jinwu, no, that's actually all of China at the time. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fucking wrong, that was, um. Spring and autumn period, yeah, so you can see the U E was there. There's the kingdom of Ru, there's the kingdom of Chu, there's Shang, Zhou, uh, Qin, and, 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 um, Jin, and Qin. There's Wei, Lu, Ki, Chi, Yun, so yeah, that's actually like all the kingdoms, uh, before the First Emperor, pretty much. Because, uh, as, as everyone knows, that the kingdom of Qin invaded, invaded all of the other ones, and took over and became China, Qin. Uh, with the First Emperor. So yeah, that's pretty much my, my plan, that's my plan for now, and I hope people are gonna be happy with it, I want to explore a lot more like Vietnamese beliefs. And stuff like that, like Vietnamese belief system, Thai, like Thailand, like Th- Thailand's belief systems, like, because it's always interesting to, again, it's like, we don't reinvent, we don't, like. You, when you write something, you never write it in a vacuum, you're always inspired by stuff, and often my inspiration come from history, mythology, folklore, religion, stuff like that, this is why I need to like study further these things. To make it both fantasy, yes, so it's not going to be the same, but to keep it grounded in a way that is believable. Right? And that's why we do it, that's why I do it, because I like it. Okay, and that's pretty much the thing.
So what's up with the tattoos?
It's part of the culture.
Yeah, 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 but just, you know, like, go deeper into it.
I mean, there's not much information.
Oh.
Uh, I can try to look into it more. Like. That's when you go. I'll try to look at, maybe. That's a cool picture. Uh, US state ancient Greek culture, Shenzhen, oh yes, nice. That's from a kingdom. Uh. Um. Yeah, but what does that mean? Yeah, because it's like most likely. Oh, that's actually, that's actually. Okay, what does that mean? That's actually, that's actually. Yeah, but. Okay, I find, I found something, that may be more, yeah. So the origin of tattoos in China, as part of the, as part of China's mysterious culture, as early as the Shang and Yin dynasties' sacrificial ceremonies, people would apply pigments to their bodies representing the incarnation of gods and spirits. It's a perfect blend of individual expression and art, historically depends, historically, people viewed this profound art from religious and worshipful, uh, perspectives, uh, today, tattoos have gradually separated from religion and underworld connotations, and people have started to appreciate this magnificent art, okay. Um. Okay. That's Japan. Okay. A record indicator during the show, the shoe, like the, no, the Zhao, Zhao period, I think, uh, BC, um, there were, there were already records of, about tattoos in China, about three point five thousand years ago, during the Shang and Zhou and Zhou period. Uh, tattooing were used as a form of punishment, referred to as song or mo punishment. Okay, ancient tests such as the Shang, the Shang shoe, and Yao Jian, again, sorry for my accent, I don't speak Chinese, I guess Mandarin. Uh, mentioned the five punishments of mo punishment, uh, mo, uh, chin, ching, uh, an ancient punishment by words were tattooed on a person's face with ink. Wait, do you mean that the rappers are literally punished Chinese people? Wow. Uh, they also apply to soldiers to prevent them from escaping. Okay, also apply to soldiers to prevent them from escaping, so if you were a soldier, Nami got tattooed, that people could track you down if you desert, if you like, become a deserter. For example, the cam, the term, um, xingtao, or xingtu, I don't know, uh, refer to prisoners who were, who were tattooed, I'm trying my best over here. Um, from the Western Zhou period, uh, onwards, uh, the use of mo punishment was widespread, the initial laws of Zhou. In Zhao, Zhou, I stipulated five hundred mo crimes, indicating that there were as many as four, five hundred offenses that could redo, uh, result in this punishment. Wow. Uh, the Shang. Okay. Uh, record indicator during the show, the shoe, like the no, the zao zao period. I think uh B C, um, there were there were already records of about tattoos in China about three point five thousand years ago during the Shang and Zhou and Zhou period, uh, tattooing was used as a form of punishment, referred to as song or mo ' punishment. Okay. Ancient texts such as the Shang, the Shangchu and Yao Zhan, again, sorry for my accent, I don ' t speak Chinese, I guess Mandarin. Uh, mentioned the five punishments of mo ' punishment. Uh, mo, uh, chen, ching, uh, an ancient punishment by words but tattooed on a person ' s face with ink. Wait, do you mean that the rappers literally punished Chinese people? Wow. Uh, they also applied to soldiers to prevent them from escaping. Okay, also applied to soldiers to prevent them from escaping. So if you were a soldier, Nami got tattooed, that people could track you down if you desert, if you like become a deserter. For example, the term the term um, xingtao or xingtu, I don ' t know, uh, refer to prisoners who were who were tattooed. I ' m trying my best over here. Um, from the Western Zhou period uh onwards, uh, the use of mo ' punishment was widespread. The initial laws of Zhou, in Zhao, so stipulated five hundred more crimes, indicating that there were as many as four, five hundred offenses that could redo uh result in this punishment. Wow. Uh, the Shangshu Liu Xing, I think, also mentions a thousand more punishments. This shows that the punishments at the time were were at the time was very severe and people could easily be tattooed for minor offenses. That ' s kind of fucked up. Uh, during the spring, the spring, during the spring and autumn, uh, and warring states period, periods, uh, various states frequently used tattooed prisoners for various hard labor tasks. Um, I ' m going to switch the music. Uh, what 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 was I saying? Uh, ah, various hard labor tasks. When when Shang Yang saw it again, uh, reform the laws on the on the on of the Qin state, uh, he used he used severe punishments. On one occasion, when the crown prince broke the law and could not be punished directly because crown prince, uh, Shang Yang had the prince ' s tutor, Gongson, Gongxingjia, tattooed as a warning. That sucks. The priest does something and you get punished. That fucking sucks. In two hundred and thirteen B C, during the thirty fourth year of the Emperor Qing Xie, oh, Qing Xihuang, uh, reign Prince Minister Li Li Si, uh, proposed burning Confucian books, uh, like the poetry and book. Okay. Ah. Those who didn ' t burn these books within thirty days after the order was issued was issued were after the order was issued were to be tattooed and made and made city down city door city dawn. Okay. The method of implementing the mo ' punishment was to cut off the person ' s skin with a knife and then apply ink to the cut. Oh my god. The Shangshu Li Xing, uh, mentions mo ' avoids doubts, mo ' avoids doubt and pardons. Okay, so pretty much if you do one crime and you get branded, then you cannot escape because your face is branded. So you cannot be forgiven or you cannot be forgotten. That ' s kind of fucked. Um, replacing the cat, mentions moving, after which um, uh, Kong uh Kong Hans, a biography states, a cut its forehead and diet called mo ' punishment. Okay, the Zhou ritual uh punishment section, five hundred more more crimes, okay, so it was used for punishment. And the punishment, a knife was used. Hmm. Okay. Ooh. Ooh. Okay. After the hand illnesses with restoration of some copper punishment, uh, tattooing was also re- adopted during the Qin dynasty. It was stipulated that if slaves ran away, after being caught, they should they would be tattooed above both eyes, and and had it added with copper. Wait, that ' s mercury. A green collar as they ran away for the second time, they would be tattooed on both cheeks. If they ran away a third time,
They fucking love their mercury.
What? I mean, okay, so So your face become like a fucking tattoo. Okay. One inch, five points long, five points wide. The kind of mark, um, the kind of tattoo mark can be deeply imprinted on a person ' s bones. Oh my God. Uh, ten, the score of a dead person, intended to use it for medicine, he saw the piece of bone with the word runaway slave on on it. Oh my God. Oh dear. Can be seen from this. So literally they would tattoo you so hard that your bones would be imprinted. And it was the tattoo was runaway slave was written on that guy ' s bones. Uh, you can think of that wing. Ah, in the Tang dynasty, note, Yo, oh my God, Yo, Yu Yangzhe. Is a collection that preserved a large amount of historical data, anecdotes, and folk customs from the Tang dynasty. It records a note about tattooing. There were many tattooed teenagers in Shangan city. Ah, the Jingdao, the Jingdao yin, official name of of Changan, okay. Uh, Xuigong, a person ' s name, uh, could bear their worries his secretary, um. What? Hang on. Okay. Uh, he secretly reported to the emperor and suddenly teamed up with various neighborhood chiefs, leading two thousand soldiers to arrest them, uh, catching three thousand people because they were tattooed. There was no time for individual trials at the time, so everyone was beaten to death. What?
Jesus fucking Christ.
What? There was, everyone was beaten to death with a board. They beat them up with like a a fucking plank. Among them, a name, a a man, a man named uh Wang Liner, had the finest tattoo with his whole body covered in landscapes, birds, ghosts, figures, flowers and various patterns. Colorful, but he could not, but he also could not escape death. But out of the notes at the back, like, it can be seen that that the level of manual tattooing at that time was very already very exquisite. And I ' m like, yeah, but still got beaten to death by the fucking plank.
Oh. Apparently my room stinks so bad from using the aerosol spray to try to get the fly. So I ' ve literally grabbed an incense and am and performing the fucking rites of the machine spirit right now.
Water Martin, very famous book, uh, was written at the end of the Yuan dynasty. L L D, at the Yuan dynasty and the beginning of the Ming dynasty, authored by Shi, again, sorry, uh, Shi Nai Yan, and edited by Luo uh Guangzong. It has many versions, it ' s it ' s widely circulated and it ' s well known, yes, it ' s one, Water Martin is very famous. It has had a profound impact on Chinese and even East Asian narrative literature. Uh, among the thirty thirty six heavenly spirits in Water Margin, uh, most have been in prison. Okay. And each person ' s face is tattooed with words. Uh, like tattoo match. Okay. Among them, the prodigal son, Yang, Yangcheng, is even tattooed with a full body, with uh, full body of peony flowers. You can be seen that tattooing technology at the time has already reached a considerable level. Yeah, but I still can ' t get over the fact that they they round up three thousand teenagers that had tattoos and beat them to death with a plank. Sorry, the Uh, during the Southern Song Dynasty, uh, Yufa, Yufa, I know, Madame Yao, uh, tattooed the words, uh, qingsong, um, rao duo, uh, loyalty to the country on Yufa ' s back to encourage him, to encourage him to fight bravely against the enemy. Okay, moment of the year, I guess. Uh, from this you can be seen that during the Song and Yuan period, tattooing was socially recognized heroic art, and something that young heroes were willing to do. Uh, before the Qin dynasty, there were roughly three types of tattooing. Um, the first was tattooing behavior, was tattoo was tattooing behavior, uh, focus on aesthetic, on aesthetics and bravery. The second was uh, quote unquote, strong man tattooing, uh, related to military control on of on those uh, with military merits. The words loyal heart to the country were tattooed on their arms. Okay. Very inspired by UFA, if that ' s how you pronounce it, I don ' t know, sorry. At the turn of two, at at the turn of the two songs, uh, there were many soldiers who were tattooed, were tattooed to show their loyalty, and some were even regarded as symbols of loyalty. Okay. Um, the third was the mo ' punishment. Okay. So that was the one we talked about. When runaway slaves or prisoners were tattooed on their faces to pretty much brand them for life. Uh, the third was the mo ' punishment of as a criminal law. After the the Tang and Song, after the Tang and Song, a after the Tang and Song dynasties, the tattooing technology improved a lot compared to is is to its application in criminal law, but similar behaviors motivated by individuals, consciousness also began to take stage in history. uh, the development of tattoos among Chinese ethnic minorities. And that ' s a lot of names that have probably been bloody butchered. Various ethnic groups in China have had tattoos, but not many remain today, uh, because probably because um the communist regime was not big fan of like um, you know, not a big fan of um, what do I see this, any kind of individual expression. Or like tribal expression or ethnic expression. Because everyone is a comrade and a comrade is just a comrade, nothing more. Uh, the main ones include the Li, uh, Gao Shan, sorry, I ' m not going to try. I know I ' m going to butcher them all. Yuba, in the southern, sorry, in the in the southern China and southwest uh regions and the, what? Okay, sorry, but banned someone. Uh, and the Shang and Du, Du, Duxia in the northern, in the northwest region, among them the tattoo custom of the Li, um, Gao Shan and Dai and De Rung are the most pro prominent. Again, sorry for the, I keep apologizing because I feel bad about it, but. That ' s that ' s a happy grandma. Um, the tradition of introduction to Dai ethnic tattooing. Among the various ethnic groups, oh my god, Ekki, Shuan, I ' m so sorry, Ekki, Shuanggab, Ekki, Xuanbana, sorry, uh, many the Dai and Bulang men uh have the custom of tattooing their tattoo various patterns on their legs, the chest, back, arms with needles, and then apply indigo or bile to make it blue and permanent. Oh, bile sounds very, which is a very painful process. Yes, that ' s what I was about to say. According to the to the modern book, a chili, a tattoo pat chili, what the fuck, what what is chili? The tattoo patterns can be broadly divided into four categories, animals such as elephants, tigers, leopards, dragons, horses, deer, monkeys, et cetera, and animals. Um, patterns like clouds, square, circle, flowers, et cetera. Texts such as Dai Buddhist mantras and sutras, and others such as um such as curves, straight lines, geometric shape, et cetera, again. And there are different uh opinions on why people got get tattoos, not only amongst scholars, but also among those who get tattooed, of course. In fact, tattooing is a custom has a history of development and evolution, has a history of development and evolution. Before the Tang dynasty, ancient Chinese texts mention that the Yue people, uh, revered witches and ghosts. Like uh, that ' s interesting for us.
Bitch, uh, witches and ghosts or bitches and toast.
ghost, sadly. And fear the ghost and gods and gods. Okay. The tattooing of various ethnic groups including the Dai originated from the Yue peoples, okay. Hair cutting and tattooing the earliest reason as much as in the book, okay, I ' m going to try to pronounce that. Why Nancy or Nanza? I don ' t know. Sorry. As is that land matters are observed and water matters are numerous, so people are tattooed to resemble scale insects.
Oh.
That is to resemble the shape of a flood dragon. So that so as to enter the water without being harmed by the flood dragon.
I am already thinking of some stuff. Um, maybe not as a path variant, but what if uh we added some extra tattoos to rune wearer?
I mean, yeah. Or we could just add a tattoo system, but like for stuff less powerful than uh.
Eh. Eh. Eh.
Are you kidding me? I mean, the thing is like in Asia, you have the Japanese tattoos, you have the Chinese tattoos, you have the Dai tattoos. You also have Polynesian tattoos. So is is that ' s a place that that we could try something like that as well, Asia. Because we also we we are putting in the Polynesian in the in there because because they ' re all Austro- nations and technically all come from the the Tonga, so that ' s why, the Tonga. Uh, and because I, I mean, the thing is that I could add more islands, but I think like, yeah, I just, you know. And again, Australians, I also be part of that technically, because it ' s, you know, I know it ' s another continent, but whatever. Hmm. Okay, this is a primitive mentality of bio bio mimicry, uh, seeking to live in harmony with nature. Okay. In some ancient books from the Tang and Song dynasties, tattooed barbarians, uh, were divided into several types, uh, embroid embroidered fruit barbarians, embroidered face barbarians, and carved title barbarians. During the Ming dynasty, the Bai biography stated those who do not tattoo their face, their feet, I laughed at, as a crowd, saying that saying they are women and not lot of the Bai ethnicity. Okay. Okay. So it was also like ethnic. So it had an ethnic marker as well. Oh, according to Dai legend, the patterns were drawn by the Buddha to help young monks concentrate on listening to the sutras and achieve enlightenment. Huh, so they so they pretty much adopt, so they pretty much merged the tattooing with Buddhist practices when it arrived. Okay.
Hmm. I get it. Point of, you know, giving somebody a point of focus.
I mean, it ' s it ' s more like um, they, because there was probably no Buddhist priest, like monks before, right? So to show because tattoos were from girl to 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 woman and from boy to man. So maybe to show the difference in their society between like, a like a normal person, a monk, they adopted a new kind of tattoo to show like that they were like educated monks. Because those are pretty much used as like a visual way to see castes in society. At and tattoo people say that tattooing is to win the love of a woman. Okay. So it was again. Yeah. Believed in ghosts and gods were afraid of harmful animals and imaginary monsters doing activities such as hunting. Okay. Tigers were evil and tigers, what? Dragons were evil and tigers, what? Later, the ancestors who believed in witchcraft thought that that although dragons were evil and tigers were poisonous.
What the fuck?
Uh, they would not arm their cubs.
Maybe it ' s rabies?
I mean, I don ' t know. Uh having fish scale patterns and fierce animal patterns, as well as later Buddhist instructions on the body could make oneself a dragon child or tiger child. Oh, so they, it ' s like they became the kid of what they scared of to to so that dragons and tigers don ' t attack them. I guess. Okay, uh tattooing was a strategy adopted by in by ancient people to adapt to some special environment and seek harmony when nature was a was uh was a with nature with a simple mentality. Okay, tattooing called chamo in uh in the Dai in Dai language is based on the traditional aesthetic concept of the Dai people that men should get tattoo uh tattoos, the more the better. Women should be beautiful by applying applying powder. The whiter the better. Okay. Uh under the influence and uh of religious and aesthetic ideas, boy who became monks uh in Buddhist temples can get tattoos after they turn eleven. That ' s interesting. Um, the person getting tattooed under the arrangement of their parents invites a skilled tattoo master, Boha. Uh Boha is often a kanglang who has returned, so kanglang I think is Buddhist priest, who has returned to to um has returned to secular life from being a from being a second Buddha. Okay. In ad I don ' t know what that means. In addition to being proficient in Dai languages, they must also have knowledge of witch witchcraft and medicine. Okay. Um, Boha lets, I don ' t know how to say that, by the way, uh let the person um getting tattooed choose the patterns they like or need uh for the the tattoo patterns, I suppose. Then the tattooing ceremony is held on the selected day. Those are draw some are drawn by the respected local senior monks or rupa. And then the tattoo master for, okay. So it ' s pretty much a way to protect yourself. Yeah. Golden teeth by you were men with tattoos. There ' s a problem with them among the people, even a frog ' s leg has patterns. How can a mag a man ' s leg not have any? Okay. Uh. Oof. Yeah, fuck. Hmm. Okay, so racial racial certificate, an identity card. Not having a tattoo is considered a betrayal of the Dai ethnicity. Okay. Those without tattoos are no longer recognized as descendants of the Dai and face so societal discrimination.
Oh, wow.
Especially from women. So women are the one going like, nah, no tattoos, no man, fuck off.
Why was that so loud?
I don ' t know, dude. It ' s your computer. That ' s very loud, yeah.
There we go.
Oh my god, okay. Another saying goes, those with tattoos are men, those without are without are women, those with tattoos are brave, those without are plain water, are plain waterborne. A K A your bitch made if you don ' t have any tattoo.
And then and then people wonder, why was there so much racism in fantasy? Because pre- modern times were very racist.
I mean, that ' s still racist today. The the West is the only country that give a shit about racism. I mean, the only culture that give a shit about racism. Everywhere everywhere else, they don ' t care. They just let it happen. Okay. Ahem. And I ' ve successfully managed to read too much and try to pronounce too many words, and now my throat my throat hurts. Amazing. I am very skilled, as you can. Um. So yeah, I guess it ' s just uh, yeah, that ' s just what it is. And again, Jingshang within the name of the continent. And then we ' re gonna detail the different parts. What is the name? Yeah, so those one were the the, no, that ' s not the goblins.
The goblins.
Stand up. Because there was like um. How could you just may? Um. There ' s a batic. It ' s like uh one of the. Does that have like where we, where where, is that very interesting, like Indonesia is like such a interesting style? Because the batic are literally like um a cloth, they are literally like um. They are like um hand painted, traditional, like um. How do we say that? I don ' t have time for this. Um. It ' s literally like uh, those are like um, like uh um shadow puppet.
Double beep.
Um, yeah.
A double beep.
Indonesian. Oh, claw. Okay. Is a demon, oh yeah, I knew that that one is like, I think it ' s like a magic one, it ' s like uh, Javan Bali, yeah. If it ' s a person, yeah, like Barbie, black magic, yeah. And that we literally like the pig, we literally steal money and shit. Yeah. A baron. Oh, that ' s like a lion. That ' s like, that ' s like, almost looks like a Chinese, somewhat of a Chinese lion, but not really. Not really, actually. It ' s hmm, interesting. Did have worst of good and enemy. Okay, interesting. Because I need to, because again, it ' s a question of like looking. Oma. Oh, that ' s literally like what they do in Chinese temples. Some of the, one of the things I want to explore, Daka, is, do you know about the nine sons of the dragon king?
Uh, no, I remember you bringing it up before though.
I need to give you that uh name.
We ' ve talked about it before, I think it just didn ' t stick.
Nine sons of the dragon, yeah. That ' s great. Um. Because they literally um. Because Bishi is a great turtle, is literally one of the nine sounds. Which is also one Which is also one of the kindred that we have. One of the kin that we have.
Yeah, we have talked about this before because that ' s specifically why I have that there.
The bishop, and because there ' s other ones, there ' s that, it ' s just really like wolf, they ' re truly like, one is a wolf dragon hybrid, one is a tiger dragon hybrid. So yeah, you kind of like interesting shit. And they will have different themes like bravery, cowardice and stuff like that, except who can stuff.
I don ' t know why, like I really wanted to say that right there.
I don ' t know why. One is a fish dragon.
Oh yeah, I remember now. Cause it was gonna be that the emperor is the one in 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 our lore who has defeated the dragon king and is the rightful uh chosen to be the god emperor.
I mean, yeah, kinda, that ' s what he says.
No, no, I ' m I ' m I ' m aware that that ' s what he says, yes.
Okay, that ' s better actually. Because the formatting is just better. And also like in Chinese uh art, like some of them are like like, you know, like the the thing like in top of Chinese buildings, often you have like dragon heads and stuff like that.
Hmm.
You know, like at the end of like the the buildings. That ' s literally because of one of the nine sounds is said to like um to scream away. Uh one is, it either ends like. It ' s literally like each of them does something different. So yeah. That ' s why it ' s very interesting because it ' s it ' s, and I don ' t see that. I mean, I could be wrong again. But it ' s just um. Specifically, it ' s like it ' s. As I said, it ' s very interesting to me because it it explores Chinese stuff that in my opinion is not explored enough.
Hmm.
Because often like you have like Chinese long length dragons, you know, like the classic Asian dragons, right? But the nine sons are not very much, are not like the nine, the nine are not explored often in Western media. Which I think is kind of bad in my opinion, because they ' re they ' re they ' re everywhere. Like, as I said, they ' re on top of buildings, they ' re literally like there ' s bells, they ' re on top of gates, like they ' re very much everywhere. Like the dragon turtle is used for like the for look at the base for pillars. Like they ' re literally like everywhere in ancient traditional like Chinese artwork and tradition. Yeah. Uh. Uh less and less actually, uh Joe. Hello Joe, by the way, if you want to jump in, I don ' t I don ' t know if you can actually. Are you at work? I I don ' t think you have like access to the to this channel. No, you don ' t. I mean, if you want, you can I can add you. But I don ' t but I don ' t know if you have like um, if you can. I ' m I ' m home at the moment, okay. I ' m just going to uh add you add the ability for you to join. I need someone to do history too and Dakka is not the person for it. Normally you can you can access the uh monster hunter V C now. The monster hunter, if you want.
Or don ' t why don ' t we just invite him to the streamer channel and go there?
I mean, we can go to, I mean, he ' s there now, whatever.
Hello, Joe.
Hey Joe, been a while.
Hello.
How you doing, man?
Oh. Alive.
Everyone is like that this week.
Yeah, I work for the government and we ' re in the middle of a government shutdown.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, in the middle of the government giving you no money. Oh, no, no, I work for state, so I still get paid thankfully, but I uh I I work in a department that works a lot with the Fed. So we ' re having to uh code around the Fed. And it ' s it ' s like beating your head against a wall.
Yeah.
It it is it is it has not, it has not been fun. Cause we can ' t just remove the jobs.
Yeah.
Because we ' re hoping at one point the government will come back. Maybe, but if it doesn ' t, oh well.
I mean. Uh the oh well is probably going to be like a few thousands people dying in national parks.
Oh yeah, that ' s true.
It ' s. I mean.
Yeah, you don ' t know how I found out the government was actually shut down?
Why? How did you find out?
Funny enough, it was shut down.
Wait.
Let ' s say funny enough, it wasn ' t actually through my job. Uh, I I had been planning to go to a really massive uh Air Force museum.
Oh.
That ' s about a two hour drive from here. And we we have been, uh me and my friends have been set uh setting up and getting ready, and we drove all the way down there just to find a sign saying closed due to government shutdown. Son of a. So I didn ' t I didn ' t get to hang out one of the largest Air Force museums.
Sad.
Yeah.
So yeah, in the. Need to like that to read it further. Uh in the, so yeah. The fuck, who chose that? Okay. Why is it so small? So yeah, the so now we exploring like most like Asian continents and stuff, but I it ' s me, so I can ' t use. I can ' t do what people everyone does. Because it ' s boring.
Uh, what does everyone do with the Asian continents?
Uh Asian, it ' s like, you know, it ' s either like the, it ' s either like classic Chinese, you know, dynasty stuff, like Manhua, like the classic Manhua stuff, or like um the the Warring State periods. Stuff like that.
Screw that, half fifty percent of Chinese history is made up anyways.
I mean, it is true.
The grand majority of it appeared that we have to or that is claimed to be Chinese today is from the post communist period when they found out they could sell it as tourism.
Oh, really? Is that, is that, is that, okay.
Yeah. Sadly.
My god.
Yep. If you want actual Chinese history, you have to go to Taiwan or all the places surrounding China.
They ' re not going to like that.
No, they don ' t.
They ' re not lying there. What the fuck? Sorry. I was looking someone like someone was bringing dragon and it ' s.
What the hell?
No, I was looking for someone that. Why is it them? What?
Pre Han China is some of the funnest of China.
Yes.
If you can get um eighteen hundreds English, the books from the Americans and English that were visiting
That ' s not what I want.
Yeah, during the Opian Wars or just before it, that ' s where you ' ll get tons of stuff from.
That ' s not what I want. They want, they literally give me like sexy dragon and look at Shoxi, which is like an artist that does dragons.
I want you to. Oh no, they fuck with dragons.
And all I get is sexy dragons and like, that ' s not what I want.
Yeah, just uh, just turn off that safer work filter, then you'll get lots of sexy dragons.
It's already there.
Involving cars.
Cars?
I, why do I fucking know what that is?
Yeah, that's an old Rule thirty four joke, that's why.
Dragons fucking cars.
Hello, Kalate.
No, I don't understand it either, Viva. I just know about it.
Oh, I can explain it. It's a very easy joke.
No, don't fucking explain it.
Okay.
I'm trying to find the art that was looking at, because I I wanted wholesome dragon art, I know, because the. Yeah, I only found them there. What? Eh, hello Kalate, what are you doing? Uh, we are currently working on the Asian quote unquote continent. We call it Asian.
We are also being currently threatened by Joe.
And we call it the Asian.
It's not even that bad of a story.
Use a character from Dragon Tales.
It's a character from Dragon Tales.
Dragon Tales, Dragon Tales.
No.
I, dude, I know that just because of like odds one out animation video, because I, I'm not English, I'm not Anglo, so I don't know, never had those shows.
That's fair.
Um. And the, we say Asian because it is not only China, it's also Japan. It's Japan, also Vietnam, Thailand, Indonesia.
Mm-hmm. The Yung is a very, oh, look up, uh, try looking up Yung, uh, Y-O-N-G.
Uh, because I also have like the Yue.
Cause the Yum might also, uh, what I'm saying is that might give you the art you want.
Uh, how do you write that?
Y O N, oh, that's, it's gonna just bring up a bunch of, uh, cause I forgot it's a name too. Give me a sec.
Because again, see. The general stuff is that, um, in this continent, the first emperor, I know it's always the case, but sorry, it's Chinese history, like he has a big, he is a big name in it. Uh, because he's.
Yeah, first emperor.
Yeah, because he's, he's, by the way, there was like discoveries made rather recently about the, uh, the Terracotta Army.
Um. Yeah, Shang, Shang Chi.
Uh, Chi Xinhuan.
Otherwise known as the Jade, yeah, otherwise known as the, uh, the Jade Emperor.
And he, because apparently, because the problem is that with the Terracotta Army, is that a few years before the Terracotta Army, all the Chinese made, was literally like little clay figurines. So you go from little clay fizzling to like figuring, to literally like full, realistic. Sculpture.
Well, yes and no. Uh, the problem is, is depends, are you looking at Han Chinese, Que Chinese, Yung Chinese, Kuai Chinese?
I'm talking about the time of Xi Jinping.
Yeah, I know. There was tons of different Chinese cultures and tribes and.
Yeah, but the Terracotta Army, like, I doubt that they were looking at the.
The terracotta, well, the, the, the problem with the Terracotta Army. Is we believe it was made by Que. Or the first Qin emperor.
I mean, but also like, there is, there is actually evidence in the text that he actually commissioned, he actually commissioned the Greek Bactrians. To, to make bronze, bronze, um, full blown statues for him.
Yep, they also, every single one of those, uh, weapons, uh, that the Terracotta had were real weapons and armor.
I mean, some were stone armors.
Yeah, but that was, um, the.
It was vitriolistic, I think, as far as I know.
The main forward footman, all of the generals and officers have a, have actual ar- forged armor.
Yeah, yeah. And again, the armors on the horses and stuff like that, the chariots and all of that, where also like the crossbows.
Mm-hmm.
Like all of that was actual, actual weapon and armor, because they believed that they would literally follow him in the afterlife.
Yep. It was his army.
And the, and the thing is that, as far as we know, like the method and one of the guy. That was literally like intered, like it was like, um, intered as one of the makers of the Terracotta Army was not pure Chinese. He was actually probably a mix of Greek and Chinese.
That's, that's fair, um.
Because of the, the shape of the skull and the anatomy in general. Uh, because yes, you can infer ethnicity by the shape of the skull. And it's.
Alright, try, try searching that.
Okay, young, young dragon.
Yep, Y-O-N-G. That is, uh, that mostly rose up from the time period when Korea was a part of.
Korean dragon.
A part of China. So pre Joson.
Okay.
Yeah, Joson. So it would have been Goron? Go, I'm not gonna pronounce, I'm not gonna try to pronounce that. I'm gonna butcher it.
I mean, I, I don't, as I said, I apologize many times when I, when I read it, because I'm like, I don't know how to pronounce this.
I do if I actually sit and try.
I don't, I really don't, and I tried. Uh.
I've got some, some friends.
Okay. But again, the thing in general is that, uh, because I want to explore time periods that are not, are themes, that are not explored mainly in like the media, because often like when you go to Japan. Then it's always like the Sengoku Jidai or the Edo period. Uh, it's either Meiji, Edo, or Sengoku Jidai.
You should do the Jocelyn period because they're freaking dwarves.
Do, yeah, I know, Jocelyn is the one with all the mountain fortress, right?
That's the, that's Korea, uh, pre Korea.
Yeah, that was because I know that's the, one of them literally like built up like a fuck ton of like mountain fortresses. And, and turtles the hell out.
Yeah, the capital, the capital, which is currently in North Korea, but the old capital, Joson, literally translates to seven peaks. Because it was built on top of seven mountains.
Dude, if we do that, it makes them actual dwarves that would be so fucking mad at us.
Oh, no, what are you talking about? Korea, like, you, you can make them dwarves easily. So Korea, uh, most of the. Black powder weapons that you think of when you go to Asia were invented in Korea.
Yeah. Because I know that, um, I know that the Jocelyn and others, because, okay, Korea was always on the defensive.
Yes.
So they asked, so they, they.
Cause they have the church into the north, they had the. They ended up mostly, you okay?
Yeah.
I think that was Daka, Daka, you okay?
Yeah, that could, that could, somebody knows.
He just died.
No, I'm fine.
But, um, like, oh, so many fun Korean weapons, uh, Korean gunpowder weapons, like the, that piano rifle that they have.
Yeah.
Um, or harmonica or whatever you wanna call it. The one that's like, it's a whole bunch of slots of rifles filed together.
Yeah.
They have, um, the turtle ship.
A good organ gun.
Are just like freaking, like, if I thought of like how dwarves would build ships, the turtle ship.
Problem is, we already have dwarves and I don't, I'm not entirely sure how we would get them there.
Just have them be Asian doors, another ti- another form of doors.
No, that doesn't, no, it doesn't, doesn't work like that.
I mean, we could, you could, you could be assholes and make example of Korean goblins.
You, well, Dai, Dai.
That could work.
Dai Kaba, Dai.
Is that called like a big mouth goblin or something like that? I don't know, like a big teeth goblin? It's the Korean goblins.
There it is. I'm looking up how to spell it.
Is there a specific one? Look, Ibe.
There it is. Yep, that right there. No, that would be funny. Cause I also have them in my, as well. Um.
We.
Yeah, those suckers.
They say that it's, it's, it's like. Version of Oni, which is like, uh, and they are technically, they are technically the closest, but not the same.
Not quite, only. They're. Yeah, really, they're, they're more, they're trickstery spirits that of course do good and bad. But yeah.
They're more chaotic.
I actually. Yeah, I have the, I do have them as a, a relative of Goblinkin. Because they, they fit the mischievous little magic tricksters.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, another Korean thing from the Jocelyn period is a family book of grudges.
Ha.
I've not even, they, uh, one of the oldest Korean books still surviving is a family book of grudges. That finally, in twenty twenty four, well, they were, they removed one of the grudges. Because they finally won up to another family. That's how much, and that, that one of the grudges.
What is a grudge?
So like Book of Grudges, that's, uh, that's Korea. Love of Gunpowder, that's Korea. Giant mountain fortress.
Long, longest uninterrupted history of slavery, also Korea.
Uh, no, actually, there's other places that are still.
No, 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 like, this is, that's the whole thing from the fucking Bobby Lee thing.
No, I, I know that, I know that that's claimed and stuff, but you gotta forget that Saudi Arabia still has slavery legalized today.
No, they don't call it like that. What do you mean?
And, and some other places still have legalized.
I don't, I don't know, Korea had two thousand years of uninterrupted slavery.
I mean.
Yeah, that still doesn't touch some other places.
Okay, the main issue that, okay, the main issue that.
Yeah, okay. Cause they're the only ones actually owning up to it.
No, I mean, the one.
Yes, that's the difference.
Yeah, the, the big thing is that it's recorded.
Yep, that's the difference. The two differences is they recorded it.
Because in, yeah.
And they apologized for it.
Yeah, it's the same, and you can agree to say it, it's the same as like in the West. We get blamed for slavery because we recorded it and we apologized for it.
There has not been a single historical culture on earth that has not at some point had slavery.
And I love the fact that some, some people say like matriarchy, like matriarchal societies, never like did slavery and I'm like, yes.
No, they have tons of slavery.
I mean, yes, it's just that women enslaved men instead.
We actually also tend to see from matriarchal societies more warfare than from patriarchal societies.
Yeah, because they, they're more reactive. Because they don't.
Also, because they're not the ones that are, the ruling class is not the one that's going to fight.
Yeah, so there's no like, there is no, like in matriarchal societies, there's no female general. Say, it's often the husband, quote unquote, one of the husbands, because often they're also like. Uh, they often have harems, depending, with high value, with high value women having multiple men, it's, it's, it's a reflection of male society.
Yeah, but.
Matriarchy is literally a reflection of, of patriarchy.
I mean Qatar, um, Qatar gets ninety percent of its income from slave labor.
I mean, yeah. Basically, don't call it like that.
So, and they've been having, they've had slave labor for.
I mean, as far as we know, in the Arabian Peninsula and in the region, slavery has been interrupted forever.
Yeah, yeah, slavery has never been, uh, slavery has never been outlawed, uh, publicly.
And it's often, it's often the case with tribal, tribal societies and also like nomadic societies.
Yep, Africa still has tons of slavery.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the Slavic, a lot of the Slavic states still have slavery.
I mean, it's just that, um, often it's like, um, sex trafficking and other, like more dire stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, not more, but dire stuff, because it's more.
And. And to be fair. Korea, even being two thousand years old, is still younger than the Qin Empire, which still has slavery.
I mean, yeah.
That's why when, when a lot of people are like, oh, Korea's had the longest, I'm like, yeah, that's, that's like baby's first history lesson.
And again, the problem is that with history, it's not about what's written, it's about what has not been written but has evidence for.
Or it's also, there's a difference between what's been written as well and what's been acknowledged.
Yes. And, and again, they, you, then I like, I hate the fact that people say, oh, but it was worse. I'm like. Too good, don't, like, too bad, don't make a good.
And, and, and it's really hard to quantify slavery as, well, this slavery is better than this slavery.
Yeah. I know both, both sucks.
Yeah, well, slavery is slavery, slavery is not, it is, it is not a good position to be in.
And both, both are horror, like manmade horrors.
Yeah, the, 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 the quiet horror of slavery of a house slave is just as bad as the loud horror of a field slave.
But I, I like the fact, I like, I like the fact for the irony of it. Is that there was like a pure, a poor, by the way, it was not a question of religion or whatever. There was a poor Malaysian woman that was working for a Kataric family as like a maid. And of course they did the practice of taking her papers and she escaped by throwing herself out of a window. Because she was, um, tortured by the wife of the guy. And when I say tortured, I mean it, like they literally found nails inside of her body that were fully healed over.
Isn't history fun?
And that, that happened like ten years ago.
Oh, last year, um, one of the UN diplomats that went to the UK. Brought her house slave with her.
Oh dear lord.
And use, and use diplomatic immunity to keep her, to keep her house slave.
That's, in England, that's fucking ironic.
Yeah.
I knew that In- that England was the first country in the West to literally recognize slavery as evil.
So she, uh. Yep, they're one of, they were the fir-, they're also the amount of money that they spent to try and remove it all from here.
Yeah, I think it was, the, um, they said that the budget was repaid in the eighties, nineteen eighties.
Yep, it took that long to finally pay it off.
It took, um, more than a century. At least two hundred years, something like that. No, because it's nineteenth century, so no century, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was quite late. I, I, I was alive when it happened. When they finally paid it off.
And no one talks about it because that's not a narrative, it's because the narrative that that dumbass is pushing is like white boy buy it.
Yep.
Hey, you know what, Whitey? You're bad. Why? Because I said so. Do you have any proof? No? Okay. And again, it's not a question of who's worse and who's better, because that's stupid. Because again, you can find any ethnicity and find people that are fucking wonderful, and they're doing their best to make the world a better place. And you would find in any of the ethnicity, like dogshit people, because they're people.
But there's a lot of, there's a lot of very fun. Um, Joson is one of my favorite, uh, Asian periods.
I also want to do like, um.
Mostly because I get to play with guns.
Yeah.
Um.
I also like the, for Japan, I'm probably going to do like the rice kingdoms period.
That is a great period. For.
Because it's like shaman, shaman kings and shaman queens and sort of that.
Yeah, for China, my favorite is the pre, um. Three kingdoms.
Yeah.
If you can, if you can find stuff from before there, one, you get way more tribes and, and hunter actions.
I mean, that's what I'm doing with the Banu Wei. What I'm doing with the Banu Wei and also the Barbarian Kingdoms.
Yeah.
Because, I'm sorry, but Chinese dynastic periods have been done again and again, you know, that's literally like.
It's been done to death.
It's literally like entire Manhua genres that are literally like palace, that are literally just like a palace romance.
Yeah, and Palace Intrigue is really fun. One of my favorite animes is, um, Cloud Color Romance.
Yeah. I mean, I also liked the, the one like the Apothecary.
Ca- uh, no, Cloud Color Palace, sorry.
I also like the, the Apothecary, I like that one.
Yeah, I. And, I need to watch that one.
Because that one is good because it's, it's not much. The end I was less of a fan of because it was not as much. It has more action.
It's fair.
But I liked the theme in general because it does not hide from the brutal aspect, right?
Yeah, I went into Cloud Color Palace expecting a romance and like a, uh, the. Reverse harem th- trope.
Yeah.
That, no, no, it was just pure political intrigue and the person that she ends up with, you, you basically know from like the first. Few episodes.
A Korean cooketris?
Neger Yum.
Yeah. It was like a weird.
Yep, chicken dragon.
Sorry, just, I saw a picture like, it was like. Okay, so.
Anyways, uh, I, my roommate is now apparently back from walking the dog. He wants, he wants to go kidnap me to give me food.
I mean, I'm probably going to like, um. We're going to end at two hours because I'm also like, I'm still tired as fuck, so.
No, that's fair. Yeah, we're all brain dead exhausted. I've been wanting.
And Dakka is, and. I mean.
Uh, to be fair, I've been looking for a different shift or a different, um, department.
What?
Because I am so effing tired of being on the opposite time zone, basically, of everybody else.
Yeah. Yeah, because you have not been able to like watch streams or like take part in things.
Uh, yeah, I know, and.
We need to pace those out a little more.
Working night shift sucks the older you get.
I mean, yeah.
So. So...
Oh, yeah, man, uh, I know I don't have clips, I don't have clips from, no, I have a clip from, uh, the campaign, by the way.
Awesome.
Do you want to see it?
Yes.
Uh, let me find, let me find it.
Like, I've been able to watch a couple of them on, uh, on YouTube.
Yeah, it's just, I'm going to like post, I'm going to post more of them. Uh, Erebus, Jet Manager is the one doing them.
Guys.
Uh, there's one, I think, with the spindle. I hope she's doing good. I have not been keeping up, because the, the, um, the problem is that I count on Twitch to like tell me when people are alive, and that's a bad idea.
It is, it's a very bad idea. I used to try use Twitter to keep in contact, but Twitter sucks.
Everything's, everything has gone worse.
Yeah, especially now that it's more AI.
Yeah.
I'm gonna head out two to go grab food, same as Joe.
Okay.
Alright, I'm gonna watch the clip, and then I'm gonna go get food.
I'll get bed!
Uh, I mean, I, I have two clips, I think. Uh, yeah, I have the one when, um, I have... I have the one, um, when the, the women are fighting.
Yeah.
Uh... What was the one?
You know that, um, that picture link that I sent actually opens up to a whole bunch of different pictures? In the Discord? So it's not just, uh, little man flying.
Yeah, yeah, I saw, I saw all of them, yeah.
Okay.
I'm Spindel.
Memories.
Look at my very feminine and thousand-accented voice. Hi, darling! I just stopped that, because if someone clip this, she's just gonna be like, "F*** you!" And that's a classic.
That's what I sound like?
Um, the story goes well, it's, uh, per usual, the ladies are fighting. I mean, you've got to say-
I could be in bed, sleeping, but no, they have to come do things. Ah, and Spindel's like very close to just grabbing you by your neck and choking you at this point. She's like, "If you don't f***- sit down and listen, we have a meeting. It is time to learn. Cease."
Yeah, I remember this.
Yeah. There was two moments where, where, I think it was, um... One time when you go to the scary house, she was literally dragged by her hair inside of the house.
Yep. She's like, "Nooo!"
Let me, let me go.
I don't wanna...
I mean, there's also like a very funny one, which I like quite a bit, which is the... In a not homoerotic way at all. Oh, there's one, um... From the Dark Heresy campaign.
Ooh, gasp, that was a while ago.
Oh, yeah, this was my first, first ever stream.
Really? That was your first RPG stream?
Yeah, it was the first campaign, yeah.
Gasp.
Yeah, I gained. Uh, where is the cops? It's three ones. There's two actually, there's one... When soci- societies rule, they're not respected. Uh, let me find, no, wh- where is it? Oh, that one.
Twenty-four episodes?
And you, you're not dead yet.
You're gonna have to start posting these on YouTube or something.
Yeah, um, the last batch is going to be, uh, uh, tomorrow. Uh, tomorrow or two, yeah. And then I have all of my clips, that I- Just us goofing off. By the way, Kate made Dakar one of his mod on his channel from the pizza. Oh, that one is great. I feel tragic the music is behind me. That's the pain of comparing spears. The pain of the shape of the Moatra. You hear how tragic it is? Every Moatra should be the same. Every Moatra should be respected for their own inner powers, for their ability to channel the charm. Dude, it's the longest innuendo ever made on this channel, and I'm only using elder scrolls terminology. Yeah, when's the clip? Like, god, I'm a dumbass.
Oh, yes, but you're our dumbass. That's what matters.
Alright, that's also that one, when she was not there.
Spindel.
Oh, f***, Spindel sucks. That, I would like... Oh my god. Oh my god, Spindel sucks! And then that one was so bad. I need some voiceover for Faron.
Yeah, it's me. Ah, what's up? I'm Faron.
That's what happens. That's, you're getting cursed, f***.
I got five in speed, so move me forward five. Yeah, get out of my way. I'm Faron.
I need, I need to find the one with the trumpet. That one is classic. It's a hood classic on the channel. Uh... How the fuck is it?
You will find it, I believe in you.
Oh, that's one.
I can't-
Yeah.
Say your name right. How do you say your name?
It's Chessere.
Chesseray. Blow into my horn. We need to do this one together.
Alright.
Hey, yo, what?
In a totally non-homoerotic way, f***, let's do it. Ooh! He's a f***ing- Dude, I created, like, literally one of the last sessions, I literally got blazed with the frog god, that is also Khamit.
That's fair.
Dragon, you know that fucking sucks.
Just lick that frog.
That's also me shitting on Rings of Power, the clip.
At what point?
Look at the magic! I think it's Sauron. It is a Sauron or Cultist of Sauron. The magic! I can cast sparkles! I'm evil! Because I know what they did, and it was like supposed to be like a mysterious shit, like, it's just, it's just fucking sparklers, what do you mean?
Ju- just evil sparkles.
Uh...
Alright. I gotta, I gotta escape before we get stuck for another hour.
And I need to probably eat and go to bed a few hours.
Yep. You should, uh, eat and sleep too.
Yeah. That's hard.
Yes, it is. Oh, yes, it is.
Dude, having to do like full shifts, full day shifts and night shift with insomnia is fucking, it's a hard mode.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Nice heart. Like a mission. Uh...
Alright.
Excafe!
Okay, again, thank you for being here. Sorry if this week was also low energy. It's just that... Dude, I'm fucking trying, and it's... Oy.
It's alright, we still love you, Biff.
I mean, hopefully it's going to go better. That's the hope. I mean, hopefully it's going to go bad. One day. So who should I fucking raid? I can raid the demonicus. Oh, fuck, she's killing it, great. It's mostly because she's very consistent and also is very adorable. I could do Vanessa, I can raid Vanessa. Yeah, let's go with Spooner Moustache. She's cool. As well. Very nice model. And also, I don't know, she's chill. As far as I know, she's fucking chill, so whatever, why not? She's fucking chill. Uh, is it two underscores or one underscore? It's two underscores. Is it?